Good evening, and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Regular Meeting of June 27, 2023. Meeting is called to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Here. Next, if you would all rise, please, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Thank you. And also, tonight, we have our Assistant City Attorney, David Lim, who is sitting in this evening for our city attorney. We thank you for being here and appreciate it. Item number four, public comments for items. Do we need to take a reset? We need to... Okay.
We want to reset.
Difficult? We will take a few-minute. All right. Good evening. Thank you for your patience. I think we've worked out the kinks. We're under public comments for items that are not on the agenda. We had two... We have no speakers here, but we did have two speakers via Zoom.
Hi, can you hear me?
Oh, hi. Hi, good evening. This is Josh and Sedena Traxler. We are business owners at Twice as Nice Bay Area. We would like to comment on downtown's beautification and events, or lack thereof. As business owners, we spend eighty-plus hours a week on the avenue. It's pretty much our second home. San Mateo Ave is like our front yard, and we need your help. We need your help to thrive and grow, to grow our business, to grow downtown into a more vibrant, beautiful downtown, a downtown that people will want to visit, including you. The community deserves better, and your local business owners deserve your attention. With that said, Josh and I are blessed with the opportunity to connect and talk with our loyal customers and fellow business owners daily, and we hear it all. And with all due respect, our majority are disappointed at the council's majority and how the city of San Bruno is being managed, especially when it comes to downtown. Why are we wasting money on newspaper stands that will cost the city over $30,000? You spent $92,000 on a parade. I propose we put our efforts and allocate some funds into making San Bruno green, fixing the drip systems in all the pots and putting trees back in. The pots are not going anywhere, and you and I know that if they do, it'll be before our lifetime. So after much discussion amongst my fellow business owners and our local community, I propose we work together, the city and downtown business owners. We can plan some reoccurring events, support one another along the way on this initiative, and help raise money to start such a project. One pot at a time, one tree at a time. I'd like to be able to put trees back in, put some green in our downtown. I thank you for your time, and I hope you will consider giving downtown a chance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me? 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 Okay. I guess I'll go ahead and just start speaking. Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID, followed by pounds.
Are there any other speakers? Okay, let's move on to consent. That is item... Oh, I'm sorry. Apologize. I just skipped one. Item five, thank you. Announcements and presentations. The item is to receive a presentation on the pre-4th of July safety operations, and we will have the two chiefs, Johansson and Delay, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Ari Delay, and I'm your fire chief. I'm here, obviously, in person this evening, and I'll be joined via Zoom by my colleague, Chief Johansson, who's on Zoom with us this evening. We're here this evening to provide a brief presentation on the fireworks safety operation for this year's 4th of July celebration in the city of San Bruno. I will speak briefly about the fire department's operation for this year's event. One important thing to note is the fire department and the police department will be in what we call Unified Command. We typically do that on an annual basis, and it's an important opportunity for us to practice our operations on a day-to-day basis and, you know, utilize that tool in the event when we have a large event in the city. So we co-locate... We'll be working out of Fire Station 51 this year again and have all of our forces, police and fire, co-located for that Unified Command. We will have all of our fire prevention staff on duty that day as well to provide enforcement and proactive measures with the public during the event as well. And then we're also placing an extra engine company on duty that day for extra protection should any type of fire or medical emergency occur throughout the city. I have Chief Gage Slice, our fire marshal, with me here this evening, and Chief Slice has conducted a mandatory safety meeting with the booth operators that operate throughout the city of San Bruno. And we have those safety meetings and make sure that they're compliant with all the rules and regulations when it comes to sales of Safe and Sane fireworks through San Bruno. And then what we have done historically, and we've done again this year, is a joint public safety announcement with the police department and fire department for our residents to explain what Safe and Sane fireworks are and how they're to be utilized here in the city of San Bruno. An important thing to note is that the Safe and Sane fireworks must have the registered state fire marshal seal on them. And if I could bring up the presentation on the screen, we'll have before you the Safe and Sane Firework Presentation Seal that is mandatory on all of those fireworks. And while it gets brought up to the screen, it's important to note that we want to make sure that fireworks are lit and used at least ten feet away from structures throughout the city, so to avoid any kind of a conflict where we cause any type of fire near the residence. And we want to make sure that we don't have fireworks that are lit, you know, near flammable grass and shrubs and those type of things to make sure that we keep our community safe. And for those folks that do use Safe and Sane fireworks throughout the city, we recommend that they keep some water and a hose nearby just in case anything were to get out of hand. They have that available to them quickly. And then, in the past, we've had a few occasions where people have not disposed of fireworks properly. So it's important when fireworks actually get lit, even though you don't see any sparks or anything coming off them, that we put water on them and actually douse them completely to make sure that, you know, we don't put them in a trash receptacle and they start a fire. Okay. And with that, if I can go ahead and we'll turn it over to Chief Johansson, if he's available on Zoom, for his portion of the presentation.
Good evening. Are you guys able to hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Thanks, Chief Delay. I'm Ryan Johansson, your chief of police. I'm sorry, but the Zoom was not working, so I'm not really sure exactly where we're at in the PowerPoint, but I see that the public safety announcement is up. City Clerk, are you wanting me to screen share as originally planned?
So Chief Johansson's going to bring up the PSA that we worked together with the police and fire departments to be able to present to our residents.
Are you able to see the presentation now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So as Chief Delay said, we do put together every year a joint PSA between police and fire. So I'll go ahead and start off by playing that.
Hi, I'm Gage Slice, your fire marshal.
And I'm Ryan Johansson, your chief of police. And we're both here today to talk to you a little bit about fireworks safety on and around the 4th of July.
First thing I want to talk about is where to light the fireworks off. So they need to be at least ten feet away from your house. We don't want any of the sparks coming from the fireworks to actually ignite something in your house. So, you know, in the street or sidewalk area. When that firework is said and done and no more sounds coming out of it or sparks, you take that firework and have a bucket nearby full of water and take that firework, stick it in the water. That prevents that firework from ever reigniting. The last thing I want to talk about is where you can light fireworks off. You cannot light fireworks off in any of the parks and their public parking lots, so stick to in front of your house.
From a legal standpoint, fireworks are permitted for use from June 28 through July 3, from noon until 9:00 p.m., and on the 4th of July, from noon until 11:00 p.m. If a firework flies in the air or it explodes, it is probably illegal. Every Safe and Sane firework will bear the official state fire marshal's seal of approval and will be purchased through a sanctioned fireworks booth. If you're caught with or are using an illegal firework on or around the 4th of July, the fine is $1,000, so it's a pretty quick way to ruin your otherwise fun celebration. Please note that on the 4th of July and leading up to the 4th of July, the police department will be out in force in an effort to ensure safety for all people who are celebrating. This will include the use of both uniformed and non-uniformed personnel, the use of both marked and unmarked units, bicycles, motorcycles, and even drone systems. So please, this 4th of July, keep your fireworks used to the Safe and Sane and only use the Safe and Sane fireworks in a safe and approved manner.
We want everybody to have a safe 4th of July celebration. So San Bruno Police Department, San Bruno Fire Department wish you the happiest 4th of July and have a great time.
Happy 4th.
So as we move on from there into the presentation, Chief Delay, I apologize, but as I said, I wasn't able to hear the beginning. Have you already gone through this material?
Yep, we've passed my portion, and it's on to you.
Okay, great. Thanks for clarifying. Appreciate that.
No problem.
So most of this is already covered to a certain degree in the PSA that you just heard, but I want to cover a little bit about what the police department does for the 4th of July and what it means for us. There's a robust outreach and communications effort leading up to the 4th. That includes the PSA that you just saw, as well as a tremendous amount of effort by the police department to contact previous violators and problem residences from past years in an effort to get out ahead of the problem before the 4th of July comes. We also conduct enforcement details for weeks leading up to the 4th. It's not just on the 4th of July, and even for a couple of days after. We're acutely aware of the fact that the fireworks are not isolated. The illegal fireworks use is not isolated to the 4th of July alone. Additionally, as I've reported in years past, all of our staff are ordered to work the 4th of July. This is necessary in order to provide the best level of enforcement and safety that we can, but please know that it does come at a pretty significant cost to staff. I always use the example that is somewhat selfish of the fact that I've been with the city for eighteen years, and my oldest daughter's birthday is the 4th of July, and I have not been there for one of those over the last eighteen years of her life because working the 4th of July is mandatory for a San Bruno police officer. As mentioned in the video, we will be using marked and unmarked units, which means that if you call and are looking for a police response, please know that that response may not be highly visible to you. This is necessary in order for us to make apprehensions and arrests on the 4th of July that a lot of the vehicles being used will not be marked police units. We also use bikes, motorcycles, a variety of different surveillance units and methods, and then also we will be using our drone systems, as mentioned in the PSA this year. A little bit of high-level information on the laws. So again, you're allowed to use Safe and Sane fireworks within city limits from noon to 9:00 p.m., beginning on the 28th of June, and on the 4th, it extends a little longer and allows you to use until 11:00 p.m. It can only be used on private property, at least ten feet away from any structures, as the fire marshal illustrated. They are not permitted for use in parks, public parking lots, schools, or any open space areas. Very, very important, given the fire risks. So please, 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 keep these... Even the Safe and Sane used to safe areas. Please know that misuse of Safe and Sane fireworks is dangerous and illegal and is subject to the same $1,000 fine for using fireworks that are, in fact, illegal and that do not have that fire marshal's seal on them. Basically, as I said, if it flies in the air or it explodes, it is probably illegal. And if it doesn't have the seal you see here on this slide, it is illegal. So a lot of times, year over year, we have folks that maybe bought fireworks in the city. They come in, they don't necessarily know that they're illegal, but if you didn't buy them at a sanctioned stand, and if they don't have this seal on them, they're illegal for use in the city of San Bruno, and use or possession of them will subject you to a $1,000 administrative citation. Also important to note here what we call social host citations. So if you own a home or are the chief renter or tenant at a home, and there are illegal fireworks being used at your residence, and you reasonably should have known that they were being used at your residence, you can be issued a citation even if you are not personally lighting off those illegal fireworks thrown on the 4th of July. So please, if you are having a get-together or if people are hanging out at your home during the 4th of July celebration, know that you can be held accountable and receive a $1,000 citation even in the mail. You may not be contacted on the 4th of July, but you could receive a bill in the days that follow if you're allowing that activity at your home. As far as reporting violations at a police department, this is a bit of a difficult topic for us to cover each year, but please know that your police department, to a large degree, is quite overwhelmed with the volume of calls and the volume of responses needed on the 4th of July. I'll tell you that while we appreciate reports from the public that are specific enough to enable enforcement, the majority of the calls we receive on the 4th of July, many of them even to 911, will be extremely vague, and I know that the fireworks can be very bothersome for some people and that it can be frustrating to feel like nothing's being done. But if you call in and say that on my street, there's illegal fireworks going off or somewhere in this general area, there's illegal fireworks going off, there's really very little we can do about that. And deploying officers to those calls will distract them from activities that could result in actual enforcement that could lessen the problem year over year. And so we ask that you only call the police to report very specific violations, meaning that you can describe the person and/or people who are actually lighting off the illegal fireworks, where they're at, what residence or vehicle they're associated with, so that we can take actual enforcement action. So with that, that ends our actual presentation. I will stop sharing, and I know that Chief Delay and I are happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you both for your presentation. You know, I brought this up before at the last meeting, that, of course, nobody likes the noise. Nobody likes folks being inconsiderate. But if either of you or both can just highlight, too, what it does for... And this was from a resident who reminded me that we should remind folks to the animals, to the community, to the kids, and the effect it has. You know, it's a celebration to them, and that's what Safe and Sane is supposed to be for, that the voters wished. But the illegals that have already started, that will probably go past the 4th, are what the community is not tolerant of. But the effect that it has, I think, to all the community in various facets, and maybe either of you can speak to that or what calls or information you get on that topic.
Yeah, certainly happy to comment, and I'm sure that Chief Delay can comment as well. It's a great point, Mr. Mayor, and the fact is that while the 4th of July, for many people, is this very joyous celebration that they really look forward to every year, that is not true of all of our residents. And in fact, to quite a serious note, many of us have animals and know that the impact that the extreme noise has on them. But in addition to that, we have a number of veterans and people with other post-traumatic stress-related illnesses for whom the loud bangs and the constant explosions, the reverberations are very real traumas. And so I think it's really important for... At the end of the day, the only way the 4th is going to be enjoyable and peaceful for the most people possible is if people just behave more appropriately and think about how their actions may impact their neighbors. And we can issue a certain number of citations and get out and enforce to the best of our ability, but enforcement, long-term, is not going to solve this problem. Neighbors being good neighbors and recognizing the impacts that their celebrations may have on other people is really what we're asking for.
I would just echo those sentiments to the council, and, you know, the majority of these items that are problematic are really the illegal fireworks, less of the Safe and Sane fireworks that are out there. And we also ask that the residents really pay attention and try to be neighborly and try to keep, you know, some of these things down to a minimum to be respectful of their neighbors.
Thank you, and I know it's always about what can we do more or what options, and obviously, it's not for now. It's looking forward. shall allow or permit the sale, offer to sell, use, or possession of fireworks on their property when the property owner or tenant knows or should know of the sale, offer to sell, use, or the possession of fireworks at property. I know there's another community that actually has something that allows... There's language in the ordinance that allows, and the municipal code that allows for drones to fly over to the manager and to staff is to look for that going forward to see if we need to revisit our municipal code, strengthen it a little bit more, give more opportunity so that it's not just about having to see it at that second, which is difficult, but it's also the fact that this is not okay. that this is not okay before, during, or after. So that's just a comment from myself that I'd like to see that done. Any questions from colleagues, comments? Councilmember Salazar.
Chair. Thank you. I just kind of wanted to piggyback on what the mayor had said and, you know, definitely we want to look at what other neighboring communities are able to do to help solve the problem, whether it's stiffer fines or, you know, enabling our staff to be more effective in addressing that nuisance issue. And it really, both everyone from fire and police for making the sacrifice every July 4th and, you know, they're out there on the street doing what they do, keeping us safe. But I do acknowledge that it is a sacrifice and we do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Medina, please. Thank you to both chiefs. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment?
Hi, this is actually Linda again, and I meant to speak on the general public comment, but the Zoom went out, so I can wait a minute until this item is completed and hopefully the mayor can come back to me.
Sure, I'm fine with that. Thank you. Yeah, stand by. All right, so then thank you to both chiefs and as Councilmember Salazar, thank you to fire, police, public works, huh? Everyone that is on duty and there in which to protect the city and allow the Safe Insane. But again, what we're hearing, what the complaints are, is not those, but what the community had voted on. But we appreciate because it is about not can you come in, as the police chief said, it's that you will come in and they give of their family and personal time, as in the chief's case with his daughter's birthday, to help our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, why don't we, if we can, city clerk, can we go back to public comment and to Linda Mason, please?
Thank you. So hi, this is Linda Mason calling, and this was actually unplanned, so I'm excited that I heard the Twice Is Nice owner speak as well. But I had been meaning to call to just take a moment and express some concern about the $93,000 unanimously approved for the traditional Posy Parade. Aside from the significant spending that occurred, I just had a couple of kind of comments and remarks and the city sponsored and funded the entire event, including waiving the fees for the third-party nonprofit organization. And by the city, I mean the residents and the taxpayers. And so the first question is why the city of San Bruno's logo was not included in a single advertisement when it was fully sponsored by the city. It's important that the city does get credit when it's doing something and that the residents of the city know that this is a sponsored parade, this is a sponsored parade by the city that we all live in. The second is why the council allowed the parade to be removed from downtown. While I realize that this came to the council late and you likely wanted to ensure the Posy Parade occurred versus not occurring, the council can always express concerns, you can always ask the city manager to bring back an alternative and host a special meeting allowed with very short notice. So for example, going downtown and ending in Lyons Field would have been an impacted, would not have impacted downtown and an 80-plus-year tradition that this city has enjoyed for so long. The third one is that the event kind of appeared a little disjointed. The parade attendance was really largely those who came out in the parade. There was not a community day that followed and that's understood. There was a change in staffing, but there was really nothing that followed. So those who had not attended before or were not in baseball had no idea what occurred after the parade. At a minimum, some local food trucks or some vendors from the local community would have really been great and made available. And obviously, if it had been in downtown, people could have just gotten lunch and patronized their local businesses. Lastly, the reason provided around safety is something that we always need to consider along with very realistic risks. Crossing El Camino and blocking El Camino was the reason provided for not having this in downtown this year. And it's unclear why this was the reason to end or disrupt an 80-plus-year tradition because it was surprising this last week when I stopped at Sneeze Lane and traffic was backed up. I was wondering why the street was stopped by police originally believing that it was a funeral procession, only to find out that it was a marathon known as the San Mateo Torch Run. As I saw what was happening, the entire four sides of the street were blocked to allow approximately a dozen or more runners continuing to run down a lane on El Camino. The street would then open up. I made a right to follow the marathon on El Camino to see Bay Hill and El Camino blocked, then San Bruno Avenue and El Camino blocked, then Genovin and El Camino blocked, and so on and so forth as they continued all down El Camino. So in the future, it would be really helpful if the council considered all of their options and really weighed the risk with what could have been and could be because the impact to our downtown was great, but the impact to our community was greater, losing this 80-plus-year tradition. So thank you all.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, with that, we'll go now to consent. And as far as consent is concerned, all items are considered routine or implemented in an earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. There will be one single public comment period for all items in this section unless a council member requests to pull an item for a separate vote. So with that, is there any item for a separate vote? Seeing and hearing none. Are there any items that there is a comment, question, or statement? I do on E. Anything else from anyone? Okay. So on, let's go to E. Consider adoption of a resolution appointing Alex D. McIntyre as the city manager and authorizing the mayor to execute an employment agreement. And I need to read the following statement. This is pursuant to the Brown Act. I am providing an oral summary of the compensation aspects of the proposed employment agreement with the city manager, which is included on the consent calendar. The proposed agreement, which would commence on July 1st, 2023, in alignment through the California Public Employee Retirement System, per the 2.7 at 55 formula, a $450 per month car allowance, 120 hours of vacation per year, and management leave. As note on the management leave, the agreement in the agenda materials reflects 80 hours of management leave per negotiation direction. However, the recruitment brochure for the position stated that 100 hours of management leave would be provided. In light of the brochure statement, the negoti- Let's see if there's any members of the public that wish to speak on any consent items.
Sorry about that. Good evening, City Council. I'm here to speak tonight. I'll take a step to the left here and assume that you will be passing consent item D, the consideration, adoption of resolution, no, E, consideration, adoption of resolution, appointing Alex D. McIntyre as the city manager. As San Mateo County Arts Commissioner, I'd like to welcome Alex to San Bruno. I am very interested in supporting the advancement of the arts and public art in San Bruno, and I'd like for you to know that. I'd like for the city council to know that as well. And that's what I'm standing here before you tonight to say. Thank you and welcome to San Bruno.
Thank you very much for your comments. Any other speakers, city clerk? Okay, is there, back to council, is there any action or further discussion regarding consent items A through E?
Through the chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I will second.
Hold on.
Yes, with the modifications stated by the mayor.
And I will second.
Motion by Salazar, seconded by Hamilton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passed unanimously. And with that, sir, if you would meet me at the podium and I will administer the oath of office as you to become the next city manager of the city of San Bruno.
You would please go ahead and raise your right arm and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
Aye, Alex McIntyre, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
With that, sir, I welcome you and we thank you and we congratulate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we have now assumed the oath. We have signed the official document, which I will turn over to the city clerk, and at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our city manager for the city of San Bruno, Mr. McIntyre.
I think technically, I'm not the city manager until Saturday, but we will let the mayors to know each of you fairly well and hopefully you can have a sense of what I'm able and capable of doing here for San Bruno. I want to thank the staff for being extremely supportive for the past 10 weeks, propping me up, making me look good, because that's what the staff does for a city manager. And they've done a great job pulling together, really trying to make this community, make this council look great. And I want to thank the community. And while I haven't had a chance to get to know you very well, you will start seeing me quite a bit, I imagine, through the course of the summer and fall, and I am looking forward to being introduced and, excuse me, introducing myself to you. So thank you very much. Thanks, everybody. And I'm looking forward to the next several years of leading this organization. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I move away from consent, Vice Mayor.
Just wanted to take an opportunity to welcome you, City Manager McIntyre, to the organization. We have a lot of work to do as you've been learning over the past 10 weeks and we look forward to solving.
Is where we're gonna now. Now we're gonna get down to some of the topics that you've been working with. At this time, we will go ahead and conclude from consent and move on to public hearings.
Item 7A holds public hearing and consider adoption of an urgency resolution for fiscal year 2023-24 master fee schedule.
Director.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'm Peter Gilli. I'm the Community Economic Development Director and I'm presenting the item on an urgency resolution for the master fee schedule. If we could have the slides, please. So this is the agenda for our item. It's the standard agenda. We'll go through the objective, the background, what the topic is, what the recommended action, and end with opportunities for questions. The objective is simply to hold a public hearing and have council consider adoption of an urgency resolution for the fiscal year 2023-24 master fee schedule, specifically to have it go into effect on July 1 of 2023. We'll go through a bit of background. It is a longstanding priority focus area of the council to grow city revenue, assure ongoing fiscal stability, economic vitality. And along those lines, in 2021, in June of 2021, council adopted cost recovery policies and a comprehensive update to the master fee schedule. In June 13th of 2023, just two weeks ago, council adopted the annual update to the master fee schedule, which would normally go into effect on August 12th. This agenda item is not about the fee schedule itself. It is about when the effective date of that, of the fee schedule should be. So as we all know, July 1 is the beginning of the budget year. It's the beginning of the fiscal year. And the revenues in the proposed budget that will be reviewed in the next item are based on the fiscal year 23-24 fees being in effect for the whole year. If those updated fees go into effect on August 12th, which is about 11 and 1/2% into the budget year, staff has projected that the revenue impact will be about negative $148,000, and I'm rounding for simplicity. We estimate also that 2/3 to 3/4 of those funds, of those fees, are related to land use or construction permits and impact fees. And the majority of that revenue impact is going to be general fund. Council does have the option of adopting an urgency resolution that will allow the master fee schedule to take effect on July 1. And that is what this agenda item is for. That urgency resolution would require a 4/5 vote and the resolution attached in your packet includes the findings for why the urgency resolution would protect public health, safety, and welfare, should the council decide that that's the path they want to take. The synopsis is that the city does not have the financial capacity to subsidize the services and that receiving the fiscal year 23-24 fees on day one of fiscal year 23-24 is in the interest of protecting public health, safety, and welfare. It's especially important when you consider the projected revenue impact and the fact that the topic of reserves is a real one when we're talking about the budget. So if adopted, the urgency resolution will be enforced for 30 days and is able to be extended. So if council does choose to adopt the urgency resolution, staff would return with an extension on July 25th, which will carry the urgency resolution through to August 12th, which is the date that the action from June 13th will take effect and then the urgency resolutions would not be necessary anymore. So shifting into tonight's recommended action, as I noted earlier, council adopted the fee schedule on June 13th, so no additional action is needed on the fees itself. The recommended action for tonight is to hold the public hearing and to consider adopting an urgency resolution for the fiscal year 23-24 master fee schedule to be effective on July 1. With that, we're available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there any questions from colleagues on the presentation, on the presentation itself? Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So just so I'm clear on this, you know, we've been looking at the budget for the past several weeks and are going to be acting on it on the next item. If we were to not pass this urgency resolution during this item, does that mean that the amount that we would be dipping into reserves to balance the budget would increase by $147,660? Is that the way I heard that correctly?
Can we have assistance? Oh, well. Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, I was seeing the nodding, so I said yes.
Okay, so let's turn it over to the Assistant City Manager, though I had a quick answer from the director, but.
Yeah, Assistant City Manager, Dr. C. Smith, and interim CFO. So I'd be remiss if I just didn't point out, that's our estimate that the calculator did. If we got, for example, a large payment of development impact fees or a really big building permit payment, it could be more than that. This is just an estimate based on the days that we would calculate revenue coming in, but quite a large amount because those impact fees were indexed, varying amounts.
Understood. Thank you very much.
What are the questions on the presentation? Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you. So just one further clarification on that. So then the $147,000 is not tied to anything.
Correct. And we have provided adequate public notice of this and the master fee schedule has been available, I think, since early June.
Thank you.
We've also been writing on this.
Councilmember Medina.
Yes, thank you.
So, I understand it's urgent because we want to make sure we capture the full amount of money that the council has approved. And that if we would have approved it in May, we would be not discussing this right now. Slipped. And in the future, it won't slip, because we'll know better to put this in place before May 1. So, I'm in support of this.
Not the comments yet. Okay. If not, can we open it to the public? This is a public hearing. Then I'll be calling for any public. Oh, passed, and we'll bring it back. Then I'll be calling for any public. Oh, passed, and we'll bring it back.
I will add to the transition within the organization. We need this tonight.
It's an urgency item. It will require 4/5 vote.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And extensions. I have a unit. Thank you. And I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Did you feel the room shift just now?
Yes.
And thank you, staff, for joining us up front. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do want to once again recommend and propose to the council tonight the city manager's budget for fiscal year 23-24. I will use the word, as I have in the past, proposed and recommended interchangeably. It is the same thing. Slide, thank you. Just for the next slide, please. So, just as a reminder for what's before you tonight, we're gonna once again present the operating budget overview, provide a CIP plan overview, talk about some of the supplemental ideas that have come from the dais over the past several weeks, and also ask the council to take action on the proposed budget, as well as the city's appropriations limit. Next slide. So, the council has heard this before. And to remind the council, we have had two workshops on both the operating budget, as well as the capital improvement plan. But because this is a public hearing, and those who may be joining us for the first time tonight, we're gonna provide an overview of the budget and, as well as the CIP. Next slide, please. So, as a reminder, for summary purposes, we are currently in the fiscal 22-23 year. We are about two weeks away from the, or, excuse me, one week away, no, about five days away from the fiscal year being over. And to remind the council, in the 22-23 year, San Bruno experienced really continued. Peter, you got the wrong slide up. Can you go back? There we go. Sorry. Sorry. San Bruno experienced continued economic growth during the current year. We received significant amounts of one-time funds that were very helpful to secure our financial stability. And we also received some federal funding in the form of ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, for the current year. And that has been incredibly helpful. Looking forward, the budget remains relatively unchanged, except for one major exception. And as the council is abundantly aware, we are about to open our expanded recreation and aquatic center, which will require additional resources to make sure we open that successfully and that we operate it successfully as well. We are also, the budget also reflects contractual agreements, both from the labor groups, as well as from vendors and suppliers who have had ongoing contracts with the city. So, those have been adjusted, and those are reflected in the budget. The general fund budget is balanced with a use of general fund reserves, and there are no reductions to core services. Next slide, please. So, as a reminder, the budget fiscal year, we start July 1, and our fiscal year ends June 30. You have, there are two pieces to the budget. There's the operating and the capital improvement plan. And really, your budget is the council's fundamental policy document, which really lays out for us our financial plan for the year and allocates resources towards the important programs and services we provide. To see the numbers one more time, it's $131 million operating budget. It's $102 million capital expenditure plan, with a total appropriation of $234 million. Next slide. The budget document, which is very, I think the term was used earlier, robust, it's a big document, and we know that. And it really does provide a comprehensive overview of the organization, the operations. It anticipates revenues, provides projected expenditures to support really what it is we do for the services we provide to the city. Our operating budget outlines specific program objectives and goals. The CIP is a $97 million work program for the 23-24 year. And the proposed budget also considers the council's adopted focus areas and strategic initiatives to basically implement the goals that you laid out for us earlier. To that end, I'm gonna jump into really the first question that came from the council last week when we met. And this was the question around which initiatives did we fund and which initiatives have we not funded? Because as I shared with you in the past, we did not fund everything. This is a little bit complicated, it's a little bit detailed. I'm gonna try to keep it at a high level, but absolutely welcome question, should you have them, and the staff is here to provide any in-depth details that you might want. Again, to remind the council, you have six priority focus areas. Your first one is to implement transit corridor vision to revitalize downtown and the commercial corridor. You have three of four programs which are funded, the downtown parking management program, the short-term downtown improvements, downtown streetscape and public spaces. In the transit corridor plan, we did not fund as proposed. What you'll also see in this table is where the general fund is supporting the concept versus the non-general fund, which typically would mean the enterprise funds or the capital reserve fund. The second item there would be the assure rehabilitation and replacement of critical community facilities and infrastructure, the community fiber upgrade. We are not recommending funding at this time. The adopt a drain program, we are not recommending at this time. The streetlight system and the underground utility districts do have funding proposed for them. Next slide, please. So, grow city revenues to assure ongoing fiscal stability and economic vitality. That is one of the council's project area, excuse me, focus areas. We are proposing to fund the comprehensive fiscal sustainability project, and we are not, at this point, funding operationally efficiencies, other than continuing to identify opportunities where we can create the efficiencies in-house. The next focus area is to continue to strengthen community connections, engagement, and communications. At this point, we are not recommending funding the summer Saturdays or Sundays for street closures. We are not recommending citywide street sweeping program clarification. The community procession survey is funded, and the café age-friendly certification process at this point is not funded. Next slide, please. Excuse me. The fifth council focus area is to protect and improve community aesthetics and safety. And the wildland risk mitigation is funded. The city of San Bruno sign/arch at Caltrain Station is not funded at this time. And the final, oh, sorry, not the final. The next item is, focus area is to continue the proactive planning for the future of San Bruno. And the adopting affordable housing fund implementation plan is funded. The affordable housing, including development partnerships, at this point is not funded. Implementing online permitting is funded. The economic development program, at this point, is not funded. Climate action plan, at this point, is not funded, although we will begin work on this at the very end of the current fiscal year. And the city office renovation is funded. And then finally, organizational health, employee success, and governance. Both areas are not funded with additional monies. We will be working on these in-house, though, with existing staffing. So, those are the focus areas. And I think it's 38 or 39 strategic initiatives that the council did ask for clarity on where this budget does propose funding and where this budget, at this point, does not. And I can keep moving through the presentation unless you want to stop there for the moment.
I would say to go ahead and continue, please.
Okay. Thank you. So, one of the most important funds for the city council really is the general fund. And this is where the council has the most discretion to basically do as it pleases, to push those resources around, to fund the priority services and programs that you prefer. And really, the general fund is the main funding source for most of the governmental efforts we undertake, such as, you know, public safety, parks, general administration, and a lot of other city services and operations. As a reminder, we have a proposed $64.9 million in revenues for the general fund. We have $66.1 million in proposed expenditures, and for a total use of $1.2 million fund the general fund reserves. Next slide, please. And this slide really demonstrates how the mechanics of that work. If you look at the third column over, before the red column, it'll show you an ending fund balance estimated for the current year of $11.9 million. That carries over to the beginning fund balance of the new fiscal year. You're seeing almost $65 million in revenues, the $66 million in expenditures, requiring about a $1.2 million in draw from the ending, the fund balance, the general fund balances. And that's how we're balancing our general fund this year. Next slide. So, as a reminder to the council, where does our revenues come from for the general fund? Really, the bulk of it comes from taxes, about 47%. And you're all probably very familiar with property taxes, sales taxes, what we call TOT, or hotel and motel taxes, and business license tax. Property tax and sales tax run neck and neck as far as being the number-one revenue source for the general fund. That is closely then, taxes is then followed by fees, and that represents about 18% of our general fund revenues. And the news for the night, and it is 8:00 PM on Tuesday, the 27th, and at this point, the governor has not yet signed a budget. But we do understand there is agreement between the legislature and the governor. And why am I mentioning this to you? Because the VLF is being held in abeyance for the moment. We believe, underscore the word believe, that the budget will be signed with the VLF included. But that is about a $1.1 million concern that we have with the budget. This budget does include the VLF being funded, the budget before you. The other major funding sources for the general fund are use of money in property, which is mostly in the form of interest income, transfers, and then the departmental revenues, which the council just approved through the master fee schedule process. Next slide, please. You know, as a reminder to the council, we are an organization with 11 departments. And as a service organization, it shouldn't come as a surprise that the bulk of our costs are in supporting our employees in the form of salary, retirement, and benefits, followed closely by services and supplies and capital. Also not a surprise for the purpose of the general fund, public safety is the largest consumer of the general fund, to the extent of well over 50%, followed by the community services department, and then other departments fall in line. Again, just want to remind the council, you know, the bulk of our revenues really do go to make sure our city is safe at all times. Next slide. So, we are an organization with today 275 employees. We are asking from the council for five additional employees in the form, and all of these employees are basically directly or indirectly aiding in the opening of the recreation and aquatic center, three of them directly through community services, and one through human resources to make sure we can staff them up and keep them staffed. And the last one is in public works as a facility, as a maintenance worker, to keep the facility maintained, properly maintained. Next slide, please. So, as a reminder to the council, we also run four basically businesses in the city of Inter, in the form, excuse me. Old habits. Sorry. City of San Bruno, in the form of, you know, four basic enterprise funds that are, you know, three utilities, four utilities essentially, water, wastewater, stormwater, and the city net. And we've walked through these details before with the council, but the council has been very supportive, certainly of the water and the wastewater systems, keeping them properly funded so that we can continue to invest in the infrastructure there, to keep the water running and keep the sewage running. Unfortunately, stormwater remains a challenge for us, and it will for a while. But the council did recently adopt a new fee that allows, that will provide an $800,000 infusion into the stormwater fund, which will take the burden off of the general fund, which is right now basically mostly supporting the stormwater efforts. And finally, this year, we're proud to say that CityNet is operating at a break-even effort, which is very positive. It will not be dependent on the general fund to close its books next year. Next slide. Council is also aware, and as a friendly reminder here tonight, that we have four internal service funds that really basically help maintain the operation, and it's sort of a pay-as-you-go system. We have a central garage, building and facilities, technology and self-insurance funds. Again, these are paid through the department's efforts, and it's about a $7.2 million transfer. Next slide, please. So, we don't just have a general fund and the enterprise funds. We also, basically, we have 61 funds, of which these are the active funds that we put on the screen. And each of these funds has to be self-balancing. And most of these funds, if not all of them, are highly restrictive in what we are able to use for the expenditures, and staff is very careful to make sure we follow the rules. Next slide, please. So, in summary, I want to provide you just a quick reminder on how the funds, excuse me, how the departments break down. You'll see the department, you'll see the department director's name, you'll see the proposed FTE, or full-time equivalent employee headcount, as well as the proposed operating budget for each of these departments. And again, we're back to operating budgets, not general fund budget here. Each department in the budget document, you will also find a breakdown of narrative explaining what the department's sort of function and purpose is, summaries of revenues and expenditures, accomplishments for the current fiscal year, goals and objectives for the upcoming year, and any high-level expenditures we want to point out for your information. So, the staff is here to certainly answer questions later on about the operating budget. At this point, next slide, please. I'd like to turn it over, back over, to Assistant City Manager and interim CFO, Darcy Smith.
Hi. Good evening, Arnold Mayor, councilmembers, Darcy Smith. Next slide. So, I just have a few slides for you about the capital improvement program. Just to give a high-level overview, this is the city's long-term vision and one-year budget and five-year projected budget for the city's capital facilities and infrastructure. And if you flip through it, each project has a page, which includes detailed descriptions and fundings. And we've stitched together almost 50 different funding sources, some of them pulling together many different funds, sort of a funding puzzle, if you will. And again, the action for you tonight would only to approve a one-year budget appropriation. And then we have a forecast through '23 through '28. And those are just projected costs. There's a total of 95 projects within eight major categories that all stepped through on one slide. And this is a robust capital investment. It's almost $244 million over five years. And $172 million is in our biggest enterprises, water and sewer systems, which you've done a lot of work on this past fiscal year. You had your water and sewer rate studies, and you had your sewer rates before you at the last meeting. You'll have water rates coming towards the end of this year. But we've really taken a holistic look at the cost of operating and capital expenditures through a five-year plan for both of those enterprises. Next slide. So, again, before you tonight is just the one-year funding, total of $97 million, 95 projects. And that does include a lot of carryover funding. You might look at us and think, gosh, why are you carrying over that funding? That's not good budgeting. But actually, it just shows you, it takes many years sometimes to build the projects, and they're in different phases. And we can't just do what we do with some operating things, which is June 30, just cut off the spigot and say we're closing out the year. We carry a lot of these big capital projects over in various phases, especially when they go into construction. We're just metering out the payments of some of those big, big projects. And again, the five-year CIP is more robust at $243 million and includes projects in various phases. And again, the water is approaching $100 million. I think the water master plan was before you, earlier this year, you might remember, stepping through a lot of those water improvements that are really sewer, citywide, as we have aging pipes and need to make robust improvements in that system. And the next is sewer. And as interim city manager McIntyre said, stormwater is underfunded on purpose, because we don't have a dedicated funding source. But we've looked at creating new funding sources for that and hope to invest more in that in the future, especially as we get impact fees coming in that can be utilized for wet utilities such as stormwater. The next one that we fund a lot is streets approaching $50 million. That's where we've seen the bulk of new projects, some of them in the Bay Hill specific plan area, and some in other areas in the city, as we invest more heavily. area, and some in other areas in the city, as we invest more heavily in my favorite improvements, which are bike and pet improvements. Because as I say, everyone walks, and most people aspire to bike as long as it's safe, so investing in that increases our mobility. We're also making technology, facilities, parks investments. Next slide. So these show those broad categories, and this shows our current project counts. And then if we flip to the next slide, it shows our next fiscal year project counts. We're adding 13 new projects, and we're closing out 17. So I know you probably wish we could just evenly match that. We are closing out some of the smaller projects, but we're carrying over some big projects and then obviously starting some more projects, but we aim to bounce it out year to year. We have no new projects in water, city net, parks, and facilities. That wasn't because we were ignoring them. Sometimes we have years where we add more in one category or another, and we have carryover projects in all of those. So again, if you look at this, though, we're doing a lot of streets, and I think that's a reflection of some of the hard work you have done with the Bay Hill specific plan and the transit corridor plan and the bike and pet plan, and we're finally getting to the point, especially with impact fees, where we're able to fund some of those projects and throw under other funding sources. Next slide. So there was a question at the last meeting, and we covered the CIP in more detail, and we have just a quick follow-up answer to that. There was a question related to a project on San Bruno Avenue affectionately called a road diet, but I do not really like that. I think of it more of a robust reimagining of the street focused on safety, again, bike and pet, other improvements to support the transition of San Bruno Avenue into a mixed-use corridor. And I know that transition has been a little bit slower than some of us have expected. I'm a big believer, though, if you improve the infrastructure development, private development will follow. And so you pointed out that this is a Caltrans-designated emergency alternative route for Interstate 380, since it parallels 380. So if 380 were to be shut down for more than two hours in a major emergency, we certainly saw our share of those with the storms this year. Then how would traffic be impacted again if we did look at narrowing lanes? So we did a preliminary analysis to put this in the CIP of other cities that had similar projects on these emergency alternative roadways. One of them is Rollins Road in Burlingame. They're looking at doing some road narrowing there and adding bike lanes. And so other cities have done this, but it's also important to point out that the foremost goal here is safety improvement. So you might remember the city's local roadway safety plan came before you earlier this year. You might remember that, and there were a lot of safety projects identified. And so this is in the preliminary stages, but it was called for in the transit corridor plan, again, to build that vision of this mixed-use corridor with bike and pet improvements. But that said, we still have a lot of work to do. So this is one of those projects that's in stage one, and for this fiscal year, there's just initial funding for planning, conceptual design, and analysis of operational impacts, including on traffic and level of service, and outreach to the community. So further consideration of design and funding would return to the city council later. This is just some kind of seed money to do some further study, because actually, the genesis of this was in the transit corridor plan 10 years ago. So again, finally getting off the ground, but we need to analyze it in a lot more detail. But that said, the designation of the emergency alternative route would not be a barrier to this. It would just be one more layer of things that we analyze. But if that were activated, obviously, it'd be major reroute of traffic really throughout the peninsula, depending on the closure, and we'd engage CHP, Police Department, Public Works, et cetera, to manage it well. But I think what we just don't really side of is what are the local needs? What do our residents and businesses need on that corridor, and what would address the safety concerns and help with mobility enhancements? We'll continue to progress that and check back in with you later. So that was the only question that I think was outstanding on the CIP. Next slide. So with that, I'll turn it back over to City Manager McIntyre to cover the supplemental budget proposals, which will be before you tonight.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager. So tonight, before you, we have a couple of steps here on how the council might want to determine how it is now is going to build its budget and move forward. Next slide, please. Last week, you had four items that were brought up from the dais as ideas for budget supplements. And some of these were opportunities. One was from the police department, some were from the dais, from the council themselves. And so we had four, and then four more came in through the, I had asked the council last week if you had any ideas of supplements you wanted in the budget. You know, let's have a chance to put them up and have a conversation about them. So we got four more in through the course of the week, and so we have eight individual items for council conversation around, are these things you would like to do to supplement your budget? And to do so, what we are showing you is what we're going to call the, you know, the department that would likely host the item, what the item is itself, the fund that would be impacted, and it's important to just keep that in mind, the general fund obviously is different from the other funds. The budget, the budget item, in other words, is it salaries, is it capital, where does it fall? The estimated cost, and then the action at the end there is what we will do is track how the council chooses to decide, for example, if number one is a go or not. Let me offer one more piece of information here for the council, because I think this is important. These are expenditures. Staff is also looking at, I'll call them revenue supplements as well, but we're just not ready with them tonight. Two of them you are aware of. One you asked us to focus on, and that was the credit card fees, the bank fees. And that we had mentioned a couple of weeks ago. We thought that was an estimated $300,000, probably across all funds, but most of it might fall to the general fund. The other issue I had mentioned in my budget letter to you is what we call a vacancy factor, which we have not calculated yet, but we will bring that back as well. And just in the simplest form, the vacancy factor is, we're an organization today of 275 employees, we have about 23 vacancies. Every day that you have a vacancy, you have something called salary savings. We're not expending those funds, but we're holding them aside, and when you do that times 23, times the average salary, it starts to add up to be real money. We don't know what the number is going to be for the moment, but it will be a six-figure, six-figure number that could help close that gap as well. Two more items I do want to share with the council that we also want to bring back to you for consideration is the, what I call the short-term vacation rentals. I think here we call them short-term residential rentals, and making sure we are indeed recouping those funds, those revenues that the council has previously approved. And the final item I want to share is the council, I think, made a, I'll say, difficult and bold decision to enact a cannabis tax. And the cannabis tax is for retail sales. Now, retail sales, I think we define as, well, when that storefront opens, we will then tax. The council needs to be advised that we today have cannabis deliveries coming into our community that we are not taxing. So we're going to try to unravel that and try to figure out what that means, how will we go about enacting the tax for the deliveries that are coming into the city from outside the city. It's perfectly legal, it's perfectly appropriate, we're just missing an opportunity. So these are the kinds of things we will wrap our hands around over the summer, bring back to you either the first quarter or second quarter, and make sure we can capture those as revenues as well. So while the $1.2 million deficit to the general fund might look a bit dire, I have a feeling we will shrink that number down dramatically once we get these calculations completed. So there's two sides to this coin, as always with the budget. There's revenues and expenditures. You have a proposal for a handful more of expenditures on the wall, excuse me, on the screen here. Just want to share those with you. And Mr. Mayor, my suggestion would be maybe questions about the broad budget, and when you're ready to talk about the budget supplements, I would just move through them one by one, and we will keep track of them. The reason we need answers on these, because we're going to ask you to approve a resolution that has an appropriation in it, and it's a very specific number. So if you add items from that list, that number's going to grow. We will track it on our site here. When you finally adopt, assuming you adopt the resolution, excuse me, the budget tonight, we'll make sure we have the right appropriation in there. With that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's our presentation for you.
Thank you very much for the presentation and the information. I want to take this, first, just be mindful, let's see, it is a public hearing. Let's open the public hearing. Let's see if there are any members of the public that wish to speak on this item, so if they do, they can say that, and then, of course, go about their evening if they choose to.
Fair and thorough, hands raised and no in-person speaker close.
Okay, if we do close public hearing, this is the one, an opportunity in which to speak on this item, so I just want to double-check to make sure that there are no speakers via Zoom.
No hands are raised.
Okay, then I'll bring them back to council, Vice Mayor.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, Hamilton, seconded Salazar, to close public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear a 5-0 unanimous vote to close public hearing. So I did it this way, because I think it start, it may go a lot of places. What I would like to focus on is to start with being recommended in the city manager's budget and/or the supplemental. So supplemental, with the additional five that have been asked for through the city manager budget, so, meaning the rest of it, aside from positions, because there may not be, and I just want to get us down the path. Okay. I didn't, oh, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I just have a question.
Please.
You know, thank you for the presentation, and thank you to all the department heads. And on Slide 12, which is the, just the overall summary of the revenues and expenditures, you were very, very clear that, you know, if, once we get to the end, if we deliberate on 79029 million. That number was typed in here, you know, a month ago. So do we anticipate any great movement in that number? Because obviously, everything is fluid, and there's, you know, a 12th of the year has taken place since this was prepared.
So when we do these projections, we do not anticipate that?
Okay.
Thank you. Do you hear my tone? I mean, we may be surprised, we may be surprised by something, but for the moment, the staff has only been working carefully Zoom, particularly at year-end, where certain things may pop up that we know are going to happen. We'll probably be pretty close, and if we're not, we, of course, will report back to the council.
In past years, we've always had the last-minute requests come in for changes, and I have always requested that we approve the submitted budget first and then go back to look at, again, to indulge that, because I, first of all, I definitely want to acknowledge the hard work that goes into the budget, and I want to acknowledge my deep respect and understanding of the process and what goes into it. And so I would hate to vote no on a budget, because there were changes in there that I had heartburn over, but, you know, if we are forced to take a single vote on the whole thing, I may have to go that route, and I would not want that to negatively reflect on the work that staff has done so far.
Is there any thought from manager or attorney in regards to Councilmember Salazar?
Let me take a stab first, and if the city attorney wants to weigh in, we welcome that as well. So Councilmember Salazar's approach is, reflects the appropriations. Should there be additional appropriations the council chooses to?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not sure we honor Councilmember Salazar's.
Turn to my left, I think there was some understanding. If not, then when it comes time, then we'll clarify it. Vice Mayor.
And then assuming that passes, then we would deliberate all the other things, and then we would basically take a vote to amend the resolution that we just.
Requirements for a meeting. This agenda item has been agendized as a specific resolution to approve capital improvement. So if you were to take action to approve that budget, once you've approved it, that's done. You then couldn't take up additional items, because those additional, the procedure that Vice Mayor has presented would be passed this budget. And I'm now straying a little bit into policy, so I want to be very careful, and I'll let the city manager interrupt me if he likes. You could just pass the budget by June 31st for the fiscal budget, which means you could come back in a special meeting, because you have no, well, actually, I don't think you could do that, because a budget has to be passed at a regularly noticed meeting, which means that you would then be at the ceiling that you created for yourself. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just want to be clear, I wasn't attempting to offer an alternative. I was attempting to articulate my understanding of what the suggestion was, and clearly, I didn't get it correct. So.
Time, and so how would it be any different if we were to say, tonight, we're approving?
Because every city does do things a little differently. I'm not saying, I'll freely admit, as your Assistant City Attorney, I'm not as up to speed on your distinctions of sort of a budget amendment, say, next week, is that we would have been to modify the budget to its heart's content tonight. You can, and I completely understand Councilmember Salazar's intent here, and I've had council members in my past to vote for the budget, but please let the record note, I'm opposed to these couple of items that have been included, whatever that particular number might be. That has been a process I've used in my past. It may not be a process.
Oh, yes, Councilwoman Medina, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to, on the budget, and then we could come back at a special meeting to talk about other things, depending on how far. So talking about the other supplemental amendments, that could go ahead. I did want to have one other comment, just to acknowledge the amount of, we got close to $6 million a year, and looking at, our streets need that amount of attention. And over the years, we were saying we needed to spend around $6 million a year, and it's probably $8 million a year, and now it's looking like it's close to, close to 10. So I wanted to acknowledge that and to thank staff and thank the voters for approving Measure G, which gives us a big part of that number. So those are my comments. Thank you.
So that everybody can do what they need to do, come on back, and then the city manager, which means we will be.
Yes. All right, thank you, we're back in session from our recess. We're back on item seven under public hearing, which is in regards to the budget of the operating and capital improvement. And before we start to go into the positions, we have Councilmember Alvarez who had some questions on the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the Office of the City Manager and the Community Economic Development Department Director for answering my questions. Submitted question earlier tonight from the CD budget for professional services, I was in building inspection services, and so, I'm okay with building inspection services for, from.
To look at. Okay. Requests, one in HR, one in facilities under Public Works, three in communities, what those titles are, and to start. Please.
Certainly, and, or let's just call it winter, just for the sake of argument.
Yep.
It's the budget.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Medina and fellow council members. So, one of the positions would be an accounting analyst, which we would also have a working title of a business manager. The role of the accounting and customer service lead would be focused on the front-of-house components, operating at the rack, because we will have a high volume of customers at desk, and also work on maintaining the rental payments and tracking billing and things for the rentals at the facility, along with overseeing our marketing for the department and maintaining the different department forms for the operation.
Thank you for that rundown, if you just, no comments, no questions? Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to.
As a management analyst, one position, and this position will help recruiting, will be providing labor and employee relations, any type of, anything HR-related, this person will be focused and provide support.
Okay, thank you. I do have some questions, but I'll certainly, colleagues.
Advantage of the number of HR staff to the number of total staff in the organization, and is this addition of another staff member to, you know, maintain the appropriate ratio?
That is correct. The city of San Bruno actually is sort of staffed very, she's here for about 15 months, and this person has worked long hours, and it's very difficult to retain folks because of the workload, and it's just, and there's cities up and down, you know, the region here of the county, where folks are, are like. I came from the city of Belmont, there is about 130-ish, 26,000, 27,000 population. Here, we, as mentioned, 280 full-time employees, plus we're looking at staff.
Any other questions? You know, I know you just alluded to the vacancy that we had at this position, not that it's not saying it's not warranted, as someone who did HR, because you're saying hiring is bringing the person, you can chime in too, please, and have as that, because once the.
Let me answer the question by asking a question, and then I'll answer the question again. So, Cora, can you explain what?
That was with the city of San Bruno for about 15 months. Her main function had been recruitment and selection for the, for full-time employees. We're not even talking about 23 or so full-time vacancies at this time, and it's been very, also provide other services, including benefits administration, providing information related to MOU interpretation, classification requests, compensation inquiries, not to mention. So, that person, to your original question, did focus on just recruitment and selection, and what I've noticed coming, I think a lot of it has to do with the fact that the HR department was understaffed, and it wasn't given sort of the recognition it needed, so that we can.
Have any other questions?
If I can, Mr. Mayor, I was going to then answer the question also. Something that the council is unaware of is we also, they still run the program, because we have a different setup for the attorney's office at this point. So that as of July 1, is the human resources will be taking over as workers' compensation, workers' compensation administration as well. You know, we have 23 vacancies presently, we have to go hire maybe five more, depending on what the council authorizes, you know, moving forward, and I think it's going to be very difficult to recruit, going to buffer that, much more so than trying to have the existing staff there, taking on the 23 positions we're trying to recruit, and then all the other seasonal, part-time, and full-time employees of the rack.
I just know the importance. Your thought, it's just, when you go out and recruit in any municipality, it takes time. By the time you recruit, go through the application process and the interviews, and then the offer, and then whatever, there. So, hold on, please. So, bring these folks on, because in essence, you can go recruit for two, but still going to take you four months or more?
So, probably not that long, maybe two to three months, yes, and because we knew the existing analyst position was going to be vacated, we've already started recruiting for that, so now it's just a matter of adding, and I'll stop there.
Thank you. I'm sorry, you.
Sure, yes, if I could add to that.
Yes, please.
So, pending backgrounds for analyst position, and as soon as that person clear, so, that would, government jobs, you will see that position, boozes, and also in that advertisement, it talks about a potential, I take, I look at it as a challenge to work and getting folks on board. So, Mayor Medina, you're concerned, I started in January's position, that's review, that person started March 6, 2023. I started January 26, and I brought a full-time person onboard, because it demonstrates to the city that 20 years of experience, I'm able to expedite and bring folks that are qualified to work for the city.
No, I appreciate that, and thank you for sharing that. And what, and maybe what I'm trying to say is a recruitment recruiter, right? Where we go out, we just did that for the city manager. We go out when we have certain levels of positions. So, is that something that we can do? And that's what I'm suggesting, I'm not suggesting not getting help, I'm suggesting utilizing those services that are out there, that do those processes, get the recruitments at various levels, and doing something more to that, and that can be done quickly. And then, and then proceed back when it comes to a quarterly amendment, and see if that's a necessity that needs to continue as far as a full-time position.
So while there are those types of services around, this is a big, this is a year-round thing. We're looking to, in discussion with Acting Community Services Director, Damon, he had mentioned that the need to staff the rack year-round is about 130 employees, you know, there's higher peaks during the summertime. But when you hire folks, you want to make sure that there is really great oversight, and that we're making decisions that's going to keep the city of San Bruno, you know, from liability. And when it's staffed, that it's internal, there's a higher commitment to ensure that we bring folks in, and we follow all the federal rules and regulations. And furthermore, we're committed to making sure that these folks get the proper support that they need, so that we, you know, they know what the rules are, we provide them the support if there's questions related to whether it's harassment, or anything that happens with 130 employees, those are prevalent, and the HR department is committed to making sure we address those head-on in advance, to again minimize liability to the organization, and ensure that we staff the rack and the city properly, and with no issues, very minimal issues.
And so, and you don't know this, I'm just asking, like, city Burlingame, city of Millbrae, when they opened up their recreation facilities, though there wasn't the aquatics element, you know, did they hire, need an additional HR personnel in? Are you saying now, and I don't know if this is known, but when you talk about summer classes, we'll just call it for summer-specific, is that now going to be handled through HR, or is that still be, or is that facilitated, I'm going back in time a long, long time ago, is that being facilitated where the recreational infrastructure actually interviews college students or whatever, for lifeguards, et cetera, and they kind of go through the process? Or are you saying all of that's being done by HR now, for part-time temps, for seasonal work?
You're talking about currently, today, if there were?
I'm talking about when the Recreation Aquatic Center opens. Today, we really don't have that element, because there's no facilities.
So, basically, the HR analysts would lead that effort, and work with the team in community services in putting together some type of a fair, recruitment fair, where we can, you know, have some tables set up, and, you know, we attract people, and so that when we leave for that event, we'll have X number of candidates that we're considering for a position. We may need to do three or four of those types of events during the weekends. But in the recruitment and selection of staff, a couple of errors of folks that are not HR professionals could really be potential, could be a potential liability to the organization in terms of questions that are being asked, that perhaps may seem to be kind of, they may think they're appropriate, but they're not job-related. You know, a couple of those inquiries by staff that are not HR could be very problematic to the organization. And so, when you have an HR analyst that is either trained, experienced, or educated in that field, they're going to ensure that the team that they work with follows certain rules and protocols, so that from the get-go, we staff up the rack with qualified folks, and that we minimize any issues related to their hiring, those that get hired, those that don't get hired, there's issues related to that, and also providing them the ongoing support related to employee-related matters, concerns. And we get those inquiries, a lot of inquiries that we get citywide are issues about a variety of things, and we'd like to, I'd like to be able to get ahead of that for the city of San Bruno, so that, again, we're solid, we're, you know, reducing potential liability, we ensure that we onboard, offboard folks properly, that we answer the questions, that we're timely in our responses, and we continue the employee engagement, and, you know, make sure that they're prepared to serve the community.
Okay, thank you, and I'm going to pause there and see my colleagues, but I do want to acknowledge that, you know, you said a couple of things. First, I would say that every department could come forward and say that they have, they were, they are, and they have been lean across the whole organization. And I, and I know, I think how I'm interpreting it, the way you intended it, was you said not giving the recognition, the department. And I don't believe I, or members of the council, ever at all say that any department is not being given the recognition. It takes every part of this organization to make it function. We can sit up here all night, but without every part of it, it is critical, and I want to let that be known, just so that there's no misinterpretation. So with that, is there any other questions or comments from colleagues on HR?
Yes, please.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Circling back on what our mayor mentioned earlier about the open position for the analysts who left, I was just thinking, are we considering to recruit from, like, internal recruitment, instead of going out, and the process will, you know, everybody expect, well, I, I'm sorry, not everybody, but we do anticipate a longer process of recruitment? So, I'm thinking, have we ever considered promoting from within or internal recruitment for that position?
Okay, so, Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Alvarez, when the city posts a position on government jobs, it is open for both internal and external folks. As a matter of fact, we've actually hired some folks internally by just posting the way we normally post. The timeframe that we have for the current recruitment is two weeks, and when we post positions for the city, it's anywhere from one to two weeks, so the timeframe is the same. Anyone today in the city of San Bruno that's interested in applying for the management analyst position, they are able to do that. So, we're welcoming, I welcome anyone that feels they may be qualified for the position. As a matter of fact, the backfill for the position of someone that just recently left is going to be not just recruitment, but labor relations, workers' compensation administration, and FMLA, Leave of Absence Coordination, as well as a potential ADA accommodation, which is something I left out earlier. But to answer your question, it is open for in-house.
Thank you, anything else? Then I want to really thank you for indulging. Then I want to really thank you for indulging my questions and your responses. Thank you very kindly. We have facilities in public works. Director Lee, please. If you can go ahead and just, for the community and as well as for us, it is in facilities, we know that. And if you can just kind of say where, just so it's, so people understand, please.
Through the chair, good evening, council. My name is Matt Leep, Public Works Director for the city of San Bruno. The question before us is to talk about the one additional position in public works in relation to the opening of the rack. That position is a facilities technician position. Facilities technician is a very broad position in terms of maintenance of facilities. They handle, and there's various elements of a facility that needs to be run and operated. I think one of the, one of the challenges for a new facility is during startup, you might have a bunch of new things, but you want to make sure that the facility is running and operating smoothly. The additional position is needed because of the footprint of the rack and the size that it has grown. It actually warrants a need for a current facility technician, additional facility technician for the city. And as you eloquently stated during the last conversation, every department can say that they're lean and that that is definitely the case with the facilities position, facilities technician positions as well.
And so this person would be brought on because of the new facility, but is that person also able to go into other facility? Is it for the whole city? Is it specified just for the Recreation Aquatic Center?
When it's operationally feasible, we will be leveraging all the facilities technicians to be able to handle whatever challenges or issues that may come up at a facility. Just because we're designating one at a specific location does not necessarily mean that if there's something that needs all hands on deck, that we go there and do that. That's typically what happens with a leaner operation. We make sure we're as flexible as possible to be able to accomplish any of the challenges that come our way.
And I know you used the example of drywall and I did see that in action, so for the PD, so you are correcting your statement. Any other, any questions for the director in regards to that position? Okay, if not, thank you very much. Okay, thank you, council, for kind of taking this as we, as we had talked earlier, taking the recommended city manager's budget first. Were there any other questions or comments from colleagues on the budget? On the operational capital improvement program budget submitted by the city manager? No, everybody's good with it? So, so at this stage, would we just, you want us to go on, well, what are we coming back to discuss further?
Right. And again, I'm trying to be respectful here and just trying to figure out also how to, it sounds like the council might have some level of comfort with what's before agreement to add any of those items. Heard them before, council expressed, excuse me, the other, during the week, you know, asking me to add items to the option of the budget before you. And then we can bring them all back and we can also bring back some attorney. It was like, again, we have a certain, we have a dollar amount and the dollar amount is there. And so when we start maneuvering the dollar amount there and take action unless, I'm looking for any commentary, doesn't mean we can't talk about things, just doesn't mean we're, we'd be adding it in to the overall, which would modify the resolution with the dollar amount. Councilmember Medina.
And if there's a consensus, we could talk about those and we can put off the other things. So that's my, that's my interest.
Let me just get clarity, but, but I meant, when you say consensus, does that mean putting it within the appropriations of the general budget that the manager just approved? Because that's what they're saying, they're going to, our time adjusting the dollar.
If we can go a straw vote on each different item, which we've done in the past and then we?
Well, that's okay. But are we looking to take action on the supplemental?
I, I think that if we can come to the agreement that, to put it in there and if we can't, then okay, then let's just approve the, the budget as proposed.
Okay. And then I just want to know, because that's where I was hearing the problematic, is because we have dollar amount A and now we're adding to that that hasn't been advertised. So that's where I'm trying to make sure we get a budget through and then whether it comes back.
Has done this procedure in the past with no issues. You know, I advise in council, but, you know, so I think what you're suggesting and as Councilmember Salazar suggested, that's the way you've done it in the past, you know, if that's the process you've used in the past, I would go ahead with that.
Thing is that you can't put an unknown in that appropriations. It doesn't work. It has to be a specified dollar amount that's been publicized. So, go ahead, vice mayor.
If I can make a suggestion, so the, the, the city manager had suggested that we X, then they would take a note, we can't do them for items six, seven, and eight, there's no amount, so we can't. And then maybe, so maybe for six, seven, and eight, those are things we can bring back at a future, at a future meeting to discuss once we know.
City Attorney, that would be okay if we take one through five, since they're known dollar amounts, they can be noted down, because the unknowns are what was concerning me. And are we okay with that? And then the others can come back in the July?
Presentation, I probably sent it in too late. For the tree planting, if I could talk about that a little bit of what?
The first item, okay, thank you, everybody. For the first item, what was a dispatcher position? If we go back, what that was, was that Councilmember Medina had asked the police department that are still frozen, they're the only department within the city that have the frozen positions. And that's just out of any of the frozen positions and I believe from what I gathered from where I was, from my activities this weekend, though this would go into the dispatcher position move forward. And those are my comments on that.
And don't need to go into it, I went into it in our last meeting as to, as to why and echo many of your comments, so.
Question for staff from public safety, how much is being funded by ARPA funds in the current budget?
Answer, so I know ARPA funds is being used, we have one more year that we plan to use ARPA funds for funding staffing and we're ratcheting it down and I'm going to apologize, Councilmember Salazar, I don't have.
He's here. 2024 and right now in the police department, only ARPA funds that go towards salaries. So at this point, just 1.5 of the 69 FTEs.
That will be one more position that is not funded. So if we're talking about adding positions now, we're in a despire.
And always, you're good at this, I know that it's been there, but yes, it has been frozen with some other position.
Spent money has contributed to that fund balance that we carry over to cover our other shortages is because we had open positions. So I would just caution that just saying it's just unfreezing, you know, we've been fortunate and, and so every, every one of the?
And you're correcting your statement because I think even the city manager said, you know, comments or questions in regards to the dispatcher position at this time? I mean, I'm, I'm hearing a three at this time, maybe it's a three, two, or what?
Three-storied career here, not to read into Councilmember, Councilmember Al, excuse me, Alvarez has not mentioned one way or the other, so I don't have a sense of that. It would be helpful, but I, I don't want to presume, Councilmember Salazar said.
Be like, well, I can't see this, but I can't see this and maybe we switch. So at this time, why don't we continue to keep the dispatch of the five and then see where we're at as far as where the straw poll was. Next, yes.
Could I just acknowledge what Councilman Leep asked for was the dispatcher, right? And it's, I have to take that. We, there's good and bad about having vacancies. It means that work doesn't get done, we save money is significant. And it just occurred to me, we were going to possibly hear about?
It's hard to calculate the specifics around what the overtime would be except the chief has of the shortage or that there's just the overtime requirement. Either way, we know there's going to be cost offsets by, we'll probably get through the year and we'll be able to, to Councilmember Salazar's point, instead of the 161,000, maybe we save 20, maybe we save 40 by not?
Zoom or, or was that, yes, he's here. Chief?
Yes, but I can tell you that there are approximately 42 hours of overtime every week that are specifically attributed to the vacancy of this position, to this position being frozen. That does not take into account sick calls and vacation to make up for the fact that this position is vacant. To your point about this being not adding, but unfreezing a position and to a point that was made earlier, we are very leanly staffed, so.
Any other questions or comments on, on the dispatcher position at this time? Okay, let's move to item number two, which is one mental health. Is it to say it's going to be 220, but our position is 110? That confused me a little.
So if I, if I can, Mr. Mayor, council, the, the year, the way it's represented by the police chief, this clinician would be 50% paid for by the county. And that, that assurance is that that would be in the first year. There is no assurance it would be in the second year. It might be, but we have to plan that once we hire this position, it no longer steps up and does the 50% cost share. And again, there's no indication that they are going to.
And I appreciate that and I think that helps that clarity. And we don't really have any crystal ball as to what the county is going to do with their budget. I can just tell you that, and I know there was a question about teaming up with therefore that sharing and if it's geographic, that it's down south, then in essence, that doesn't. And, and I do hear my colleague to my left about this is one of those situations that really, and Medina?
All the, so there's, there's my vote.
And, and I was going to say, and hopefully the county might find funds to continue.
For this, I've seen it in, in person, the, the, the benefit of, of this position and what, and of having this service available proactive in dealing with the county on this. You know, there's a, there is a, there is a, you know, there are, in general, mental health services are, you know, coming from the county and not at the city level. And sharing this cost with the county on an ongoing basis is actually quite logical. And I think that that's another set the county level to encourage them to continue this program beyond year one. But that's my long answer of saying yes to this.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments from other colleagues at this time? Okay.
That forfeiture funds could be used to, to pay for this service.
And actually, I know a little bit about that. Believe it or not, but at, at a very low level, but I know those forfeiture, those funds are very restricted and they come in in two forms, one that's kind of an equity sharing and one that's DEA, I believe, which is very nominal to the city. But my understanding is they're very restrictive.
The mayor is right, they're very restricted. I don't know if there is a workaround here or not.
Yeah, there's a couple of different sources there, the mayor is correct, there's asset forfeiture and they get categorized in the budget the same way, but there's, well, it's small amounts that get seized each year and then they get spread amongst the various agencies that participate in like the county narcotics task force, the gang task force units like that. The larger funds come in through equitable sharing, this is by virtue of our role as in the DEA task force at San Francisco Airport. Those funds are extremely restricted and the very first rule, similar to grant funding, is that it cannot supplant, provide the officer that works at the DEA task force, it cannot be used to pay for other positions.
Thank you. Okay, any other at this time for the clinician? Okay, let's move on to item three, which is one community service officer. That was the of things. Personally, for me at this time, I think the main position that the chief had thought was dispatcher, I think the mental health opportunity is something we should take. And so at this time, I'm not, I think it can come back at another time, but for this time, I'm saying no to the community service officer.
The, the importance of the first two, and so I will respectfully just say understandably, I'm, I'm not in favor of that, but hopefully sometime in the future. Thank you.
Yeah, I will. Similarly, I would like to, I would like for us to, you know, look at this again during the, during the, one of the quarterly budget views and adjustments to see if there have been, if there have been changes, perhaps projects that have been, have been, we should keep this one on the shelf.
Any other comments from colleagues at this time? Okay. We're going to move on to item four, which is median maintenance. I'm going to talk, I mean, it's very clear, it's professional services 238,000 and that was brought up last time. And that to me means, I'm going to use the word, outsourcing, which is not what my intent will, and do the work to bring us back to where we should be, to where our community and others have expectations. We know we've heard about the medians. I know that the parks staff is lean and has been. I mean, when I was there for what, to what they have today is, you know, half probably. And so I'm mindful of that. I, I think what would need to be done is I would want to have it clear that the union has talked to. I believe they'd be okay. I'd want it to be clear that it is not our intent to outsource, it is just to help. I often ask prior directors or prior managers, what's, what's the timeline? When do we hit this area? Is it quarterly? Is it whatever it is? And that we kind of have that established and that we meet those expectations. And if we can't meet those expectations, we don't have it go so we get back to where we are. We spent a lot of money in this community on those medians, we really did, and then have a plan going forward. That's my recommendation. But, but it doesn't have the dollar amount, so that may not help, but it is to have that. City Manager.
Sure, if I can, in anticipation of this particular conversation, again, the mayor's right, it was sort of a fully hire or contract out, the median maintenance, full-time, you know, 12 months a year, really to do sort of the, bring the small army in, knock, knock everything back and then send them away and do so probably in, in May, June-ish, because that's, I think, when it's, maybe even earlier, just before they get so, so large. I think that's more, that's more of a $50,000 expenditure rather than the $238,000 expenditure. Again, it's a one-and-done effort, but then our crews would still have to go in and do the ongoing maintenance to catch the things that keep popping up. So it's a much smaller number, it is still a number though. And the mayor's right, we would have to meet and confer with the union with the teamsters to make sure there is comfort with all that.
Okay, one time, not an ongoing. Vice Mayor.
So I, I'm in, in favor of us addressing the medians. As everyone knows, you know, with the winter that we had, you know, right now, the medians are extremely overgrown, but it's a one, that's a one-time thing, you know, this time last year, that was not the case when we had a dry, when we had a dry winter. So I, I'm in favor of us bringing in, bringing, bringing in an outside crew after meeting, doing the meet and confer process, making sure everyone's cool with it, bringing in a crew to knock everything down, get it, get it back to where it's supposed to be and then, and then continue on with our normal, our normal maintenance schedule to, to maintain from there going forward. Also, because this would be a one-time deal, a one-time bringing in, maybe we can explore using one-time funds. We have, we have a whole bunch of different, different one-time funds that are, that we have access to. Maybe this is an area where we can dip into those and not, and not grow the, the, not pull that out of general fund reserves. So I would, I would be interested to see where we could, where we could possibly pull for that, for that one-time effort, because we wouldn't use that for the ongoing maintenance and all that, that would still be part of the general fund.
Councilmember Medina.
So the mayor mentioned earlier, which is so true, the city's medians have lacked a program maintenance have, just for as long as I know. And it was interesting that this year, under our interim city manager, that a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month ago, crews are out there on El Camino, our crews, and they got that amount of work done for the portion that they needed. And then there was some work done on Sneeve where the weeds got so high at an intersection at the veterans. Crews went out and took care of that. So my, my question is, based on that amount of work that was done, like could our staff kind of continue doing that effort? The areas that are probably too aggressively overgrown, and I know that from working in a garden, sometimes a space is just like, oh, that's going to take a lot of work. So maybe we could have the big army, I think the city manager said that, as long as we talk to and meet and confer and get that all squared away, that the toughest spots, we would say, hey, you know what, we'll do that, do that, and do that. Where our current parks staff, they did an amazing job. It's very noticeable when you have weeds three, four feet high and then they're gone. I mean, that's pretty good. Now, the overall programming of how we need to take care and minimize that from coming back, that is something we could probably look, have staff look into the future and how we're going to fund that, but to get a result? But to get a result that I think our whole community expects, that it's, they're properly maintained, that's something that I'm in favor of. And so how that works out in this budget, or maybe that's something we come back to. And I love the fact of that we could, if we can use one-time money, so it doesn't hit the general fund, I would be very open to that. So I'll leave it at that, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions? Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do support this, the median maintenance. However, I just am a little concerned that if we contract this specific work, that there should be one employee that is driving around the city and check their quality work. I'll give you one example. And I appreciate what you did, because we really need it badly. On Highland, and I think this is our jurisdiction, on Shark Park and Highland, there's always like overgrown weed on that area. And I just happen to, to be walking my, my dogs. And I specifically talked to one of the workers that maybe, you know, they can trim the sidewalk, which is basically important, overgrown weed. And I came back from the walk, and it's still there. And I introduced myself, and that's a perfect example. If we hire other, you know, company to do the work for the city, I hope that we are overseeing them and checking their work.
If I can address that, Councilmember Alvarez, I think we would have a standard, certainly, that we would want to make sure that this crew was coming in and abiding by. It's not per se just yaking the weeds out. There may be a little additional maintenance that would be required. But yes, we would, we would be watchful and manage the contract as well.
Councilmember Salazar.
So I agree that the city is a little lacking in having a program to address this, and certainly a focus on that would be beneficial to the appearance of the city. Because of what we're talking about, having, I mean, if we have a regular program that's going to address this, it's going to have to be serviced regularly by existing staff. We're not talking about adding staff to do this. So why couldn't this just be part of, going to be handled by staff? They have contract dollars that we've expended for arborists and other things that could be used for this. So I'm not really sure why this is, why this needs to be a standalone budget item, if it's really just going to be handled by the department.
Sure. You're not wrong, Councilmember Salazar. I think one of the deficiencies we had this year in building this budget was with the new community, the acting community services director and myself, and the CFO, all but missing now, we just didn't have the knowledge to understand, you know, was this embedded in the budget? And if I can, back to Councilmember Medina's point, I think because of the rains, everything came up at once, right? And so we had 7.3 miles of medians that suddenly needed attention. We don't have near enough staff to go deal with that. And spring's, spring is also a time for our park staff to be very busy dealing with spring activities, just on the fields we have. And so, you know, by really redirecting the staff to the medians, just meant they weren't dealing with the fields then. So again, you know, the word lean seems to be the, the word of the night, and everything's leanly staffed. I think this was a chance to try to get ahead of something, so that when our guy, when our crews are showing up, the, the level of effort can be a little more efficient. Again, back to Council, Councilmember Medina's comments, it took, I think, two weeks to do the stretch of the El Camino, which was, you know the distance. It was at a half mile, a 7.35 miles. That took two weeks. And so you start doing the math, it's just going to take a long time. And yes, we could probably do it, but some neighborhood's going to get stuck with the weeds this big. And if there's a way of spending 20, you know, 25 to $50,000, whatever the number might be, to just knock it back, get it done, and then be able to ongoing, to sort of on an ongoing basis, maintain that lower level of impact, I think it's just an easier effort. I think this year caught us by surprise with how, another term we've used over and over, how robust the weeds are this year.
And so, yeah, my point was really, at 250,000, it probably should be something that gets addressed in the budget. But if it, if it's a $50,000 effort, as you suggested, it could be just to outsource that one part to get us ahead. I mean, I believe that's within your signing authority.
In mid-year, if we find out that I've taken too much money from other contract, we just got to figure out how to manage the contracts we have and make sure all the work is getting done. That's expected, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm hearing a majority, so I'll put that as a, as a yes at this point, and then we'll go down to item five. Park upgrades, which would be a suggestion.
Councilmember Medina, and it's been an ongoing conversation he and I have had, and he's mentioned this, I think, from the dais here, either last week or the week before, with regards to things like, we, we don't seem to have monies in the budget to deal with the one-time, the one-off repairs and whatnot. Or we don't seem to have sufficient money for those one-off repairs, whether it's a repair or a replacement of, in this case, a parks thing. The scoreboards has been mentioned more than once. And the idea of, you know, whether we're actually replacing a scoreboard, or just fixing a scoreboard, whatever that process needs to be, for whatever reason, in this city, we've done neither in the past several years. I think the question is raised now, should we be investing a little more heavily in that level of effort to maintain what we have, improve what we have, beautify what we have, make sure this, you know, using the scoreboard as the, the exact example and the metaphor, all at once, of it's there, but it's not working, what's up? So for this, this was an idea that was, maybe there's a pot of money set aside that can, you know, one-time money that can be used, and we can track it more carefully this time to figure out what are those repairs we're trying to do that we haven't previously been able to budget for. And again, I don't know the reason why not, for whatever reason, we just haven't. So maybe it's time to set up a little bit of some funds to be able to go and knock those things down. It is not unlike the landscape median, it's the exact same example, deal with the thing that needs to be dealt with, and letting the park staff, the experts, go out and figure out, let's fix the light standard, let's mow the lawns differently, let's, whatever those things might be. And again, I think Councilmember Medina had a couple of specific examples beyond scoreboards. I don't mean to harp on the scoreboard, but I know that's an important element.
You're using example.
Right.
And then, thank you for that. And then I'd like to ask Councilmember Medina to expound upon it, if you can, please.
So the, I guess part of the, part of the equity side of this thing is that we spent, we're spending a lot of money at City Park, and City Park's going to be amazing, right? But what about all the other little parks? And things at these parks, I know they are reviewed every year by the Parks and Rec Commission, but, you know, there's still things that are needed to be done. In addition to the new scoreboards, why, why couldn't we have water bottle filling stations instead of greasy fountains, right? They're like 5,000 or 6,000 each. Playground equipment, how often is that replaced? And I know, I think the mayor was talking about one of the kids that he ran into that kind of, I don't know, things to get fixed. As well as the general condition of our ballfields, right? And I don't want it, I understand we're not going to get everything fixed, especially not in this one budget, but we have to start talking about it. And we have to start budgeting for the assessment of what would it take to get out to City Park and other parks to, to really upgrade those fields? And we, we received a rough cost, right? But, and then the other thing is the lighting improvements. I know we have a project over years to kind of replace the, the lights at our fields, but it's, it's not in a budget, and they still need, they still break, and they need to get fixed. So, so where is that money coming from anyhow? And then we do have one-time funding, one-time money. And so if we don't talk about it, and we don't budget, then we're going to go another year without it getting fixed. And so this is one of the things that preferably are perhaps we could talk about a little bit later, because I don't see.
The only thing I would add is, you know, we, and as was alluded to, you know, our Park and Rec's Commission, they do their, they do their, their walkthroughs of all the parks. And I would imagine, and I, please correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, they put, they, they note down things that are, that are, that need to be fixed, and we end up with a list. And that list is probably sitting unfunded, because we don't have the, we don't, we don't necess, you know, some, some items get addressed, some items don't get addressed, because we don't have capacity or, or funds to deal with them. So I would hope that we're at least part of the way there, in turn, at least of the assessment of what needs to be done, at least, so that that should be at least partially done. And I would be in favor of, of using impact fees to start addressing those things on a one-time basis, because these are one, these are one-time issues that need to be addressed. And, and I like the, where we're supposed to be, and so that we can then maintain it from there.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to only aesthetically, but my main concern that I have brought up to our previous city manager was the safety of the park, especially, not because it's my district, but area there, that, that is not fenced in. I forgot to.
And Councilmember Medina, it's an arbitrary, again, using the medians, and I think it's a good example, it's just getting ahead, it's a random arbitrary number.
Impact fees, let's be specific. One. Two is, there, are there assessments? So we, we talked about Grundy slide, but also City Park's slide is having a problem. And so it's out, one of the slides. So in essence, what I, what I'm thinking too, is there's immediate needs that are already there. So we've already had two slides down, we have one slide now, and so we still have one left. Councilmember Alvarez mentioned about the safety element. I think those are critical needs, right? That's, that's first and foremost, that the equipment is safe and the area is safe. I think it also needs to be prioritized in the sense of, you know, Earl and Glenview. I would not have an expectation, unless there's something, I don't know, for it to come back and say, we need something there, because they are the newest park within the community, is my first thought. But I mean, the Park and Rec Commission has been out there, has seen things, maybe there is something at the office. I think that kind of information would be great to have, but I also don't want to not include the Parks and Recreation Commission. I think they're an integral role, hearing from people, being out there, seeing all the parks, and I would really want them a part of that process. But anyway, I think you've heard some of the questions or comments that could be brought back to help, help understand that better. I'm hearing a majority for that. Is that, okay, just wanted to make sure I was making sense. With that, let's move on. The downtown planters, which was unknown, oh, you had said it was Councilmember Medina. So is that, that would be a, I was going to say, a Councilmember Medina, is that a comeback with like the, the park upgrades?
Yeah.
You said tree planting you want to talk about.
If we could talk about it just a little bit.
Sure.
And then it could come back, absolutely. I mean, the whole point is, and I think we've heard it a couple of times, it's like, let's get the city back to where we think it should be, that the city, I mean, the city needs to take care of its business, right? The medians are city property, the parks are city property, well, the planters are also city property. And an amazing group of residents took that on during COVID, because they wanted to improve what was there, and I think they wanted to get outside and, and contribute and do something when we were all like stuck in our homes, right? And so it's time for the city to take care of its business, to step up, and we do have the funds in the right account, and we can, and we can get back to that. So the planters, like in general, look pretty good, although I would prefer like more trees, but that's something later on, so.
Other comments at this time?
I think the only thing is, I see professional services, so I'd want that quantified of, what does that mean, ongoing, one-time? And this is just when it comes back. Downtown planters, I'm assuming is not what's in the plan as far as trees. That may be a little different, maybe you're talking about the beautification, but I think those are some things staff and when you meet with the manager, you can talk about. Anything, oh, Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do agree with Councilmember Marty Medina about the downtown planters. I don't think it's going to cost a lot, but it's going to help create vibrance to our downtown area, so I do support this.
And it'll come back, and I do know that obviously volunteers have helped, and I do know the last one, I went there, what you said, before I had to go to a meeting, the city did bring some material, the city did bring flowers. So I just wanted to make that point, too. Illegal dumping enforcement? I'm just going to, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Councilmember Medina?
Right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll admit that I probably report most of the, San Bruno responds on dumping, because it's so easy to do, and you see it. And for too many years, I think, I think our public areas have been used as dumping grounds, and it's very difficult to catch somebody in the act. However, again, it's, it's time for the city to be more proactive, and like, what are we going to do about it? There's probably 10 locations that are in my mind, like every time, every other week, it gets hit along Huntington, or down over by Bel Air School, within our neighborhoods. And what could we do? Can we, can we get some video cameras up? Can we put some signs and put some additional lighting, perhaps, some motion-activated lighting? Can we increase the penalties for people that do get caught? I deal with my son a lot, and it's basically, until there's a consequence for an action that's wrong, that behavior's going to continue. And here in San Bruno, the dumping is going to continue and continue, because there's no consequence. You're not going to get caught, and it's a lot cheaper to dump on a street that you don't care about. And I don't think it's really our residents. I think a lot of it is just people passing through that, that know there's that stretch of land, it's really, really dark. Two different sources of funding, and I guess the police forfeiture account, that's not going to happen, but we have a solid waste account. There's $383,000 in that account.
The balance of the council. I think the focus, and we will still continue to confirm that, whether or not that source could be applied here. But on the, superficially, it does not appear to be a good source right now, so. But we would, we'd keep looking.
I like that.
And I think if, or when it comes back, I mean, I think there's other issues. Is it going, the cameras, you know, where can you place them? Let's say you see a car coming up, but you can't identify the person, so can you really, is that really where you can go to court and you can find them? I mean, I think there's, and then how much investigation is that going to take? So I think we need to look at its totality, and, because it sounds good, but I think there's a lot of things in about the video camera. If it tracks on somebody's private property, then where is that, even though it wasn't the intent? And if it was placed on a streetlight, as an example? So I think those are a lot of the minutia that needs to be, the, I hate to say it, but the weeds, we, that staff would have to go through and see. And I think on the, we were, we've come to the conclusion that both those funding suggestions at this, at that time, when you think of that, probably wouldn't be the most appropriate. But to bring that back, unless there's any other comment, Vice Mayor?
No, I just, I just want to say that I am, I am supportive of doing this there, and Councilmember Medina is correct, that there are, there are a certain number of hotspots where this, where this activity takes place again and again and again. I know that this, for a fact, that there's, it's a multi-use area, but, you know, and I do agree with the mayor that this is a, that this isn't simple. This isn't a, this isn't, isn't something that we can get at easily, but I think it is absolutely something that's worth our attention to see what could we do to, to address it. So I would like to see this come back.
Yeah, I mean, everything coming back is great, it's just staff time it takes. But, but at the same time, too, until those answers that we have the, the big picture, then we think, because obviously if we put it up, we want some action, because if it says we've taken your picture and nothing happens, then that doesn't help either. But anyway, for another time. Item eight, tree planting. Councilmember Medina.
Right, so I, on page 35. Um, right, so I, on page 35 of the budget.
I'm sorry, I I apologize. No, I didn't see the green light over here, and I apologize. I'm sorry, Marty. Councilmember Alvarez.
That's perfectly fine. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I I think this, the maintenance and the median, I recall Chief Ryan had a presentation about illegal illicit dumping, and so if we are, it's similar to this appropriation, wouldn't that be, or could it be added to the budget as well for the code enforcement because they're already implementing this for?
Form of more money for code court, uh, sorry.
Code enforcement?
More money for code enforcement, or you mean more code enforcement officers?
Um, so for the purpose of this illegal dumping, to stop it, we are enforcing picking up the, you know, the the garbage, and wouldn't this be related to the the enforcing as well in addition to to sending our code enforcement there? We will.
It could be added there. Code enforcement typically is for private property, and this would be, if I'm hearing this right, this is more on public property. It, Councilmember Medina, those are the hotspots? I, you'll have to take a minute to tour one day, show me the hotspots. So so I think it just depends, but I think Councilmember Alvarez, you're going in the right direction, that conceptually it's an enforcement effort, whether it's through, you know, Public Works or Parks Maintenance, or whether it's through code enforcement, it would be enhanced level of attack. Thank you. Chief Johansson?
Not all, just briefly, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I I think that perhaps just asking permission for this to be an item that perhaps with the blessing of the city manager that the police department could bring back to council with an enforcement plan, because there are multiple facets to this problem and who conducts the enforcement based on public property, private property, muni code versus penal code. I think a better analysis of what the best mechanism is is probably appropriate, and it's entirely possible that stepped-up enforcement, selected enforcement, like with many other issues that face the police department, can be conducted with no additional appropriation from council. And so if at all possible, just to to grant some time for the city manager to task me and my staff with coming back to you with a more thorough report on what can be done in this regard that might be appropriate.
The city manager is giving the, I know you probably can't see him, the acknowledgement of yes, and I think council, what?
And this is great because it's the last one. So in our, in reviewing the budget, I noticed that we're having revenues and expenditures, and we're not spending as much as we're bringing in, so currently there's around $30,000 in in the tree planting budget and to provide additional budget and to pretty much spend most of it because every year it just stays there. And and so we should we should we need for residents to volunteer. My suggestion there would be to also offer a resident a a free unit of water, 748 gallons of water to to water the tree, and hopefully they will, or the neighbor next door to it will, and we would expect that staff would be able to go by and kind of say, hey, yeah, it looks like it's being watered properly, and they wouldn't have to water that tree, but occasionally somebody's not gonna water their tree, but I just want to acknowledge that money there, and if it's not budgeted, it doesn't get.
Questions or comments? I I know that I remember it was a large tree planting, it was throughout the community. There was a lot of staff time, to dig the holes, get the equipment out there, get the water out there, and yes, it was because residents had asked for it, the expectation was they're gonna water, they're gonna take care of it because they asked for it as well. And yes, you can get volunteers, but still it takes a large staffing component. So that, for me, would need to be more fine-tuned as far as what does that really mean? It it's a great thing, it was it was a great opportunity. There was adopted park, which some neighbors had done at Grundy Park, and so then it was just specified in there, and then they had done some trees. They did a lot of the work, but then staff still had that work that they had to do, prep on Friday, it's just my my thought. Vice Mayor, did you have your?
No, I'm I'm supportive of this. I would want to see the the details, of course, when it would when it would when it would come back, but you know, if if considering that we have the funds in the in the tree fund, you know, putting those into the ground for, so to speak, makes more makes more sense than leaving it in the budget. So I'm I'm in favor of seeing this come back as something actionable.
So I think what I've heard is concurrence is on, let's start at the beginning. I think that's what we said we would recap, is item one was a yes. When I say yes, this is straw poll. Item two was a yes. Item three was a no. Item four was a yes, but as a one-time, maybe in the max of around $50,000. Item five, six, seven, and eight, no action. And there was a lot of discussion on the variables of it, and it may come back to be honest about that. We have to know the priority also is the new Recreation Aquatic Center. That is, it's it's, you know, that's top. We want to do it, we want to do it right. So did I summarize that correctly for anybody, or does anybody differ with my summary that that you heard? Okay. So with that, let me turn it back to the city manager when it comes to the supplemental budget proposals. What do you need or what do you take back from it, if if you can?
So my suggestion then would be that we ask the council to consider adopting its budget to reflect the city manager's proposed bond, to be very clear, and then the the 50,000, excuse me, $50,000 one-time, it's gonna have to come from the General Fund Reserve as well for the moment because it it doesn't qualify for Parks and Lou or Parks.
Oh, sure, I must have comments. Councilmember Salazar?
So, yeah, I've I've heard the mayor often say that hope is not a plan, and what I'm hearing right now is a lot of hope that things will will come, and and honestly, I hope so too. I really do, because I just want to say, three short years ago, we had two events, no VLF and one major project that didn't come to fruition, and that put us in a $2 million hole after we had approved a budget. And so I'm I'm still smarting from that experience, and so as we move into approving other projects, I have to say I am very uncomfortable with what's being proposed here. I'll support the budget. I know it needs to pass, and I know all these things are important, but I don't think that this. Also, overtaxing the staff, because what we've seen in the past is even with our best intentions and with us approving funding, staff has limits as well, and imposing more work on them when we keep hearing how stretched they are is, I don't know, not a good way to show support for staff. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Anything else at this time? Okay.
I know you've been thinking, I've been over here just, I don't know, surfing the web, but I've been getting everything ready for you.
Actually, nobody up here said that privately, no.
Okay, good, good, because I've been trying to put together a summary of what you want to fund so that if you want to make a motion, you can make an amended motion. So the items in red are what I heard the support for, majority support for the one dispatcher dispatcher position, which would be a salaried position within the police department, one mental health clinician, which we've corrected from what we published earlier, that's a professional services line expenditure, it's not salaried since it's a contract outside the city. Year one, $110,000 since the county would pick up the 50/50 cost sharing. And then median maintenance, which has been reduced from what was shown previously to 50,000, and that would be, it maybe is a little boost from what was shown previously to 50,000, and that would be, it maybe is a little confusion, it is budgeted in the line item expenditure account of professional services, but it would be a one-time contractor, is my understanding, not salaried city staff one-time. So I've broken out here by one-time $50,000 expenditure for fiscal year 2324. Ongoing fiscal year 2324 would be $271,327, so the grand total is $321,327. The motion, which would be before you, and I'll leave this up because it's a lot mouthful, but I feel like when we make these decisions on the fly, we would just want to be as detailed as thorough. I think the attorneys would agree, and I did review it with Assistant City Attorney Lim to prep for tonight. So if you want to make the motion, you would make the motion to approve the first resolution approving the fiscal year 2324 operating capital improvement program budget and the 23 to 28 capital improvement program with an amendment to change the operating expenditure appropriations from $118,894,136 to $119,215,463 to include three supplemental budget items as follows. I won't read this all out, but it would be the dispatcher.
I would like you to.
Okay, hold on then, I gotta create, correct my typo. Kind of a perfectionist here.
Please.
Okay, because we had.
It's all right.
Potentially had four. So we're back to three supplemental budget items as follows. $161,327 for one dispatcher position, ongoing funds for salaries, $110,000 for one mental health clinician, ongoing funds for professional services, 50,000 for median maintenance, one-time funds. That's one resolution. There's another resolution for you tonight. We have not changed that. That's the resolution approving the city's appropriation limit, the GAN limit, which would remain unchanged. Operating expenditures does not change the calculation, and that is the GAN limit of $53,641,794 for fiscal year 2324. And just so I'm very thorough, the resolution, that first resolution recitals paragraph number 11, page one, the very bottom, this is all you would be changing. So this is the red line. So it's that one number that changes. The, all the other numbers you see here, operating revenue, transfers in, transfers out, don't change.
Thank you for doing that as as we went and reading it. Appreciate that. Any questions? That's before the body. Is there any action? Vice Mayor?
So I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution as just read by our Assistant City Manager.
That's why I wanted you to.
That's why we wanted you to read it.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and seconded Hamilton, Marty Medina, on the resolution. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That is a 5-0 unanimous vote for that. City Attorney?
I just want to get clarification. There were actually, she mentioned two resolutions.
I was about to make a motion on the second.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir. And now we have the second resolution, which is the GAN limit. Vice Mayor?
I would like to make a motion to approve the city's appropriation limit, GAN limit of $53,641,794 for fiscal year 2023, 2024.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion, Hamilton, seconded Marty Medina. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Have a unanimous 5-0 vote. With that, I do want to thank my colleagues for their time, their thoughtfulness, reading a budget that had 400 and some odd pages to it, but thank you, and also, most importantly, thank you ACM, thank you CM, thank you CA, all abbreviations, it's getting late, and thank you to all the staff, because I know it was a true collective effort, and I know it was a lot of work, that we thought we were almost there, and then had to kind of come back and go back forward again. And so it is very much appreciated, your time, dedication, and others stepping into roles that are not accustomed to that department, but did it and did it well. So thank you. With that, we will go ahead and move on to council committee report outs. Colleagues, Vice Mayor?
I have I have one short report out. On June 22nd, I, we had our regular meeting of the Airport Land Use Commission. The committee did not have a quorum present, so we heard reports and provided comments to be included in the reports that will be made to the full CCAG board. Three items were proposed five-story Life Sciences Building above Bouchorice to be determined as consistent with the San Carlos Airport Land Use Plan. Second was the Foster City Safety Element Update as being consistent with the land use plan for both San Carlos and San Francisco airports, and also Pacifica's draft 2023 to 2031 housing element. There were no, there were no contrary comments, but we could not take a vote.
Thank you. Other council, no, I'll I'll try to make it, I'll shorten it up. June 15th was a commute.org, and we approved the budget, which was great, and looking to extend a potential lease for our facility. On June 15th was the Emergency Services Council Meeting, which the budget was approved. They, we set a reserve policy for which will stipulate 500,000 to 1.5 million in reserves, which some of those reserves are utilized in the budget process, which then help reduce and or not have the significant increases to all the agencies. And at North Fair Oaks on July 15th and on August 5th at the Event Center, there will be the, they will be hosting and participating in the two-day events, which are kind of the preparedness days that everybody can go and see. And there will be upcoming three tabletop exercises planned for this summer. One is the tsunami on the coast, the second is wildfire and in Petola Valley, and the third is the flooding along San Mateo Creek. And so they're also, when I say they, as the DEM, is developing an alert and warning policy and procedure system. On June the 21st, we had a Recreation Aquatic Center Advisory Committee. Things are still going okay and well, but again, we don't want to jinx it. And on June 23rd, we had the Council of Cities in Foster City, which we actually learned, which was kind of interesting, the history of the lagoon, how it evolved. Comments from council members, please? Councilmember Medina? Okay, wait, hold on. You don't. Okay, so let's go through the chair. Vice Mayor, Hamilton, okay. No, no.
We were about to say the same thing.
Oh, I got you.
So tomorrow is the the monthly food distribution at for second harvest at the at Bel Air School. If you are, if you and your or your family are food insecure, you can come to to Bel Air, the the distribution starts around 2:00 PM, the line starts before that, so you'll want, you'll, there could be a a large crowd coming tomorrow. So and it is, it is a service that you can sign up for on the spot, so if you haven't previously come to to take advantage of that service, you you can just drop, just show up and be signed up on the spot. So also, we're always looking for volunteers, so anyone listening, if you have some free time tomorrow afternoon and would like to help us, you can come down around 1:45 PM to the parking lot in front of Bel Air, and we would absolutely take advantage of your of your of your kindness to help us out, because it's a lot, it's a lot of work to provide groceries for 250-plus families. That's it.
Councilmember Medina?
I do want to stress the need for, that our community needs. So my my one announcement is is to make sure that if if you're a baseball fan, this is the place to be in San Bruno for this week. The Dale Wilson Baseball Tournament starts tomorrow, runs all the way to the Fourth of July. You're gonna have all age groups playing ball. Come out, come out and cheer for the San Bruno baseball teams as we take on everyone that comes in. Thank you.
Thank you, and for me, I just wanted to say, I think Councilmember Salazar, I attended the June 17th, which we, on June 17th, we attended the Juneteenth in the city of Milbrae, was their first time, and so I think we took some notes as well on our Recreation Aquatic Center is complete, and our park is there, systems that were being used outside in between the library and City Hall, which is kind of their field work, and so I want to thank them for the times. Oddly enough, it was just very windy, but aside from that, wanted to say that. With there being no others, that segue into the adjournment, I want to adjourn in the memory, and we were just talking, I was talking about the radio club, and I want to talk about Walter I. Long III. Walter unexpectedly passed away, and although he does reside in the city of Brisbane, but we love everyone, his influence and involvement extended far beyond those borders. He played an intricate role in the numerous local hammer clubs that provided emergency communication in the area, including Milbrae, Pacifica, Daly City, and of course, San Bruno. He selfishly served as president of the several of these clubs, earning the respect and admiration of countless individuals throughout San Mateo County. Walt had an exceptional amateur radio operator and a man of great character, whose dedication to the San Bruno Amateur Radio Club was imperiled. He has served as president for many years, and under his guidance, the club preserved through some challenging times, notably, of course, with the recent pandemic. His commitment and passion for the amateur radio were genuine and admirable. His generosity defined Walt's character. His generosity defined Walt's character, and he shared his time and resources with boundless compassion. And I will tell you, being at the radio club, and Michael might have, or Councilmember Salazar might have heard it, too, that was the discussion about who he was, what he did, and what he gave. And it was also his service group that he served on, doing the various things way beyond the radio club. But it was truly that they all admired him, they were going to miss him, and his active participation. And for our community preparedness, if you went there, Walt was there. He was, been a part of it, and he's been a part of this. And again, it's all volunteer. So with that, we offer our support, thoughts, and prayers to his family. And with that, I would like us to pause in a moment of silence in memory of Walter I. Long III. With that, we will go ahead and adjourn in the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on July 11, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night, and meeting adjourned.